Good evening and Happy New Year. As Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order January 17th, 2023, regular meeting. Thank you for attending tonight. Before we begin, I would like to go over some ground rules for this meeting. This is a public meeting on the superintendent's recommended budget. All public comments should be related to this budget or agenda items of this particular meeting. Any other public comments not relating to tonight's agenda should be kept until the next regular board meeting. Each member of the public wishing to speak may address the board for a total of three minutes. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute to wrap up. At the end of the second bell, your three minutes are out. We have a number of speakers tonight. Please be respectful of everyone's time. If you run out of time, you may submit your comments in writing to Ms. Santiago. I ask that there is no disruptive or unruly conduct, be respectful of the time limits, no personal attacks on individuals, no vulgar or offensive language, no signs are allowed inside of the board meeting, speakers may not yield their time to another speaker, speakers must refrain from naming employees, and a person may address the board no more than twice during the single meeting. This will be a very difficult budget decision, budget season. We will face many challenges, however, we encourage you for your input and candor, but I am kindly asking you for everyone to be respectful of everyone's perspective. Before we get started, I would like the superintendent to give a high-level overview of the budget process for those that may have missed our budget workshop. I encourage all to view the workshop in its entirety, and the link can be found in the meeting's agenda on Board Docs. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches y bienvenidos. Si necesita interpretación al español, por favor levante la mano y la intérprete le ayudará en este momento. Antes de comenzar, queremos establecer las reglas para esta reunión. Esta es una audiencia pública del presupuesto recomendado por la superintendente. Todos los comentarios de hoy deben estar relacionados a este presupuesto o puntos de la agenda de esta reunión en particular. Cualquier otro comentario debe esperar hasta la próxima reunión regular de la Junta. Cada miembro de público que quiera hablar puede dirigirse a la Junta por un total de tres minutos. Al final de dos minutos, el timbre sonará para dejarle saber que le queda un minuto para concluir. Cuando suene el timbre por segunda ocasión significa que se acabaron sus tres minutos. Tenemos muchas personas que quieren hablar esta noche, así que por favor seamos respetuosos del tiempo de los demás. Si no le da el tiempo, puede entregar sus comentarios por escrito. No se permite conducta ruidosa. El tiempo límite será aplicado estrictamente. No se permiten ataques personales contra individuos. No se permite lenguaje vulgar o soés. No se permite letreros del salón de la reunión de la Junta. Una persona no puede cederle su tiempo disponible a otra persona. No se debe mencionar empleados por nombre. Una persona no puede dirigirse a la Junta en más de dos ocasiones durante una misma reunión. Este es un periodo de presupuesto difícil y queremos escuchar sus observaciones, pero por favor mantengamos el respeto. Antes de comenzar, el presidente de la Junta pidió a la superintendenta que brindara una descripción general de alto nivel del proceso presupuestario. Para aquellos que se hayan perdido nuestro taller de presupuesto, les animo a que visiten o lo vean en su totalidad, y en el enlace se puede encontrar en la agenda de la reunión de Board Docs. Gracias.
Superintendent?
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Ms. Santiago, if you can support with the visuals, and I'll do an overview. And before we dive into the overview, I do want to share, and this was per request of our board, some engagement, key specific engagement dates as to the budget process, so that all invested parties have an opportunity to understand the budget development process and give voice, and can also understand the projected outcomes and implications. The process is crucial to how we form the budgets for not only schools, and school governance councils have engaged in the process through budget workshops presented by myself, Chief Penn, in partnership with the Office of Community and Family Partnerships. Included in those sessions were specific trainings with Alavue, and that is our platform that gives visibility into where we currently are in terms of the budget development and then expenses, and also to better understand our equity-based school budgets and the formula. And during the first week of December, we have had several meetings. For example, schools and departments had cross-functional budget reviews, and the district hosted another virtual community forum on the budget, which was open to the public. Our cabinet team has been engaged in the process, trying to find strategic investments, and also disinvestments, right, trying to prioritize. Two more dates to call out, January 9th, when SGCs had their second round of review and discussion, and of course, this evening, where there is a public hearing. We do have also an upcoming meeting with, three more meetings. One is with our union leadership to have an opportunity to unpack the budget, Finance Committee for final review, and then the target date for the adoption. I'll do a brief overview of where we currently are and the allocation. So this is a visual, the pie chart represents the allocation of the 2223 district budget. And so what you see here is that about 58% of our budget is in direct school-based expenses. So out of the remainder, right, you see that another 29% of the budget is allocated toward transportation and tuition payments that we make to other districts. The remaining 13% is attributable to central office budgeted expenditures. But even within that category, within that group of expenses, a portion of those costs represent school-based staff that are paid out of the central office budget. And so the percentage of the budget that is truly central office-based is about 8.9%, which is actually in line with the average. Let's see. We've also added there in that little box to the side, just examples of the school-based staff that are paid through the central office budget, but also, right, but specifically work in schools. And that's a, that's a total of about 4.2 of the, you know, that 13% that's at central office. If we go to the next slide, please. Essentially, this is like the headline, if you will, that our 2324 budget effectively boils down to a projected $24 million deficit without any mitigation measures. So we expect to receive for revenues just under $417 million, and the expenses, right, what we have to pay out will be almost $441 million, right? Ideally, right, what we, what we have to get to is for those two numbers to be the same, at the very least. So regarding the revenue, this is the money that comes in, we are expected to receive flat funding from local government and decreased funding from the state because of, of a sizable decrease in the state magnet operating grant that is due to the decrease in enrollment. But our expenses, that is the money that we have to pay out, will increase due in large part to increased transportation costs. Now, this is mainly for the non-Hartford Public School Hartford residents, and increased tuition costs with corresponding increased enrollment in magnet schools, right? Because we have Hartford students that are not only attending our magnets, they're attending magnets operated by others. The biggest, not, but not only the, the only driver of the change is about 300 more students enrolled in Craig Schools in the 2223 year than in the 2122 year. We also know that Craig tuition will increase, $1,700 per student from 202122 to 2324. And so, right, another contributing factor to increase expenses is, you know, the challenging context that we're all in, which is, right, the inflation and increased costs for goods and services. So that is a broad overview of the headline, and clearly, if you move to the other slide, we have no intent of going into the next year with a $24 million deficit. We cannot do that. So we've identified five different work streams that address the gap from both the revenue standpoint and the expense standpoint, and we're, right, try to roughly quantify given amount or range of what each opportunity could produce for us as we think about those mitigating processes. So the largest of these is around reducing positions, and we're being very intentional around their use of that word, right? Cutting vacant, reducing vacant positions, not people that are in roles currently. So when hiring and recruiting new talent to the district, right, we have to be very mindful to prioritize classroom-based instructional staff, staff that are directly impacting instruction, and we'll, we'll be scrutinizing the need for other positions unless there are compliance implications, right? We know, for example, that our paraeducators support students mostly with compliance as per the individualized education plans. So by holding off on filling some of the vacant positions, we can recoup some of the projected expenses. We're also going to look at consolidating programs and platforms and our non-personnel expenses, since the full expenditure of this budget is almost 18 months away, right? We know that implementing a budget throughout the year, it is a fluid process. So one thing that we could do is to build an expense task or, or task to be identified after the budget is adopted and through the end of the following school year. And you see that reflected there as well. And then on the other side, right, so this is the second green line there, when we think about revenue and as, as some of the conversations that we've had with you all, board, and guidance offered by some of you, right, we can reallocate some of the ESSER funds for this year and next year in a way that moves some of the costs to ESSER through the end of next year. So in doing that, we would kind of be buying, buying some time to determine a more permanent cost reduction model through some of the reimagining work that we're hoping to begin to, like, have deeper conversations about or some other course, course of action. And lastly, looking ahead, right, after tonight's public hearing, we do plan to review the, the budget, as I mentioned before, with union leadership in February, and then after that, we will make key personnel available to our board to follow up with additional meetings and/or some of you have already submitted specific questions. We will make those available not only to the entire board, but also on our website for our community, so that there's transparency as to some of the questions that have come in, perhaps a committee of the whole or a similar venue to continue to have the conversations and work through, through the budget. The Finance Committee meeting, the next one is on February 13th, and it could also include another board discussion if, right, if it's needed and, and for updates as to what has changed as to the mitigation. And right now, February 21st is the date identified for the adoption. Beyond that, we think that there will be additional work around legislative advocacy and more to come around chef. We know that, right, families are still choosing, making selections, and we don't know ultimately how many seats are going to be accepted. So we recognize that all of these actions come, come at a price, right? There, there are tensions that we have to, we have to weigh on both, on all sides, and our number one priority when developing a budget is to ensure that all of our students and staff have equitable access to the resources that they need to be successful. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Christina?
My name is Faith Iska. I'm in ninth grade, and I attend Hartford nine elementary college academy. I am giving this speech on behalf of my classmate, Jaylise Rodriguez Rivera. Have you ever wondered if students honestly enjoy the school lunch, or how it may affect them when they're forced to continue their day on an empty stomach? Although bringing lunch from home is an option, many students cannot afford purchasing lunch for school and as a result, have to depend on the school for lunch. According to the Food Research and Action Center, school lunch is critical to student health and well-being, especially for low-income students, and ensures that students have the nutrition they need throughout the day to learn. Based on this information, students need proper school lunches in order to function properly. Teens depend on the school to serve them a lunch that will be beneficial to their mind, bodies, and soul. A large majority of students do not enjoy the school lunch. A New York Times article states, although we are in high school, my peers would rather go hungry than eat their vegetables and fruits. So much food and hard work are wasted as they selfishly throw them away. I think that the menu has to change to combat this wasteful eating, not the kids themselves. This shows that the students are not to blame. As teens, we crave a lunch that we will be able to enjoy. We need the fuel from the food to get through our day. Other methods can be applied. For example, high schools outside our district have a variety of food bars such as salads, fruits, and more. They actually let their students interact and choose what meal they'll be receiving for the week. If Hartford Public Schools were to implement more suitable options for the students, lunches would most likely not be wasted as much. I can personally vouch for the necessity of this change to happen. I'm not only a student, but an athlete as well. I have to wait until 12:40 for lunch just to be served with options that I do not find appealing. I have to wait until after school or after practice to eat something that I can enjoy. Student athletes have to stay after school for games or practice and don't eat unless they are brought food or until they go home after their activities. It is important for teens to maintain a balanced diet in order to perform to their very best. The portions Hartford Public Schools serve to every grade are the same from pre-K to 12th. How is this acceptable for an active teen, nonetheless an athlete, to receive the same-sized meal as a three-year-old? But before changes can be made for an athlete to receive the same-sized meal as a three-year-old, there must be changes for the food to be at the best of ability. If lunch options are not changed to more suitable options that teens will enjoy, it will affect how students perform, whether it's in class or on the court. In conclusion, I ask on behalf of the HMCC student body that the Board of Education approves providing a more fitting, enjoyable food selection for students. Thank you.
My name is Melody Valdez, and I attend a Hartford Public School. And today, I would like to discuss using our budgeting to help provide better school lunches for students to the board. As a student, I truly believe that students are not given quality food that is sufficiently able to fill their stomachs. I ask you to please help improve our school lunches in ways that students will benefit and enjoy the food given to them. I would like to receive a written response at melodykvaldez@hotmail.com. Did you guys know that actually, it's been quite common at our Hartford Public Schools to see mold in our food and in general, older food? I personally have encountered having old ranch with mold in it, and it is not very pleasant. So I think if we could work on overall making our food not only not have mold in it, but also it being new, it would be very beneficial. Also, I would like to point out that the portions for a kindergartner are the same exact as they are for a senior in high school. How are we supposed to compare a kindergartner with a senior? There's no comparison there. Also, because of this, this will make some students remain hungry throughout the day because a senior obviously is not going to be full off of, let's say, two chicken tenders. Students can also just overall focus better if they actually are being fed well. Also, another thing I would like to mention is that not many options are available for students with food allergies, health issues, and preferences. So for example, someone with gluten-free issues will not be able to do it. Healthy foods are also a problem. We are commonly served burgers, mozzarella sticks, and other unhealthy things. We need to work on that. Not all our food groups are covered. 60% of school lunches are unhealthy. 16,000 students worldwide have died due to food poisoning in the last year. We need to work on this. I suggest this can be done by giving different portions for different grade levels, looking at expiration dates and not serving if they're expired, checking for mold before giving food out, providing better options for people with allergies, health issues, and preferences, giving healthier options to students, and incorporating all food groups into lunch. Now, I would like you to all ask yourself a question. Put yourselves in the shoes of someone that is six-foot, high schooler. You cannot consume any gluten, and there are no food options for you besides only a yogurt that is the same portion as a kindergartner's. Do you believe that you will be full with just a yogurt? No. So how are we expecting students to be full off of that? I overall believe that by editing our lunch menus, students will massively benefit from the changes, will be prepared to learn, will be full, and will be in general, better students. Thank you for your time and attention. Thank you.
Melissa Yenny Saint Just?
All right. Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Melissa Yenny Saint Just, parent and SGC member at Bachelor de Montessori School. I also wear several hats within the district, such as teacher, HFT third vice president, and Hartford resident, just to name a few. First, I would like to begin by thanking the superintendent and her leadership cabinet for making adjustments to the second ALIS training session provided. It provided additional support from social workers, police officers, and SSOs in person. Many of our HFT members expressed gratitude for the usefulness and practicality of the second training. It was a vast improvement from the first district-wide virtual session and was a fine example of effective collaboration. However, as mentioned previously, I wear many hats in this district. Today, I am in front of you wearing my most important hat, my mom hat. I am here on behalf of my son, his school, and the Bachelor de Montessori SGC. Before, excuse me, not this son, my other son. Before the winter recess, our SGC was informed of a $530,000 deficit for the upcoming year and that we had to make cuts. This was and still is puzzling to our SGC members since we have not decreased enrollment or had any other drastic changes throughout the school. Our SGC members have done their due diligence to attend district budgeting meetings, they've critically analyzed the proposed budgets, and shared our concerns with central office leaders to no avail. Today, I was tasked by the SGC with bringing several concerns to the board. We are extremely concerned about the $530,000 deficit. We don't know where these cuts are going to come from. We noticed that the equity-based starter budget indicates that our school receives a per-pupil allocation under the flexible dollars category. We want to know if our flexible dollars, which is approximately $121,000, are truly flexible. We would like some more clarity on those funds and what should be happening with those funds. We also have been identified as a focused school. We need some more clarification on what that means and what it actually entails. We would like to ideally have a Hartford Public Schools representative come to our SGC meeting to coach us through this process. We recognize that the Montessori model is not the same as the traditional education model, but the benefits are truly, truly extensive for our students and our families. We love our school. We need to feel like we're valued, we're valued stakeholders in this process. We don't feel like we have a voice, and we're not confident in that right now. So I look forward to hearing from someone from Hartford Public Schools to help coach us through this entire process and guide us so that we can give the best to our children and our schools. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. And I just also want to wish you all a Happy New Year and good health for the year, so you may do your work. So I'm here, you know, it's, it's 30 years I've been fighting for, for schools, and, you know, if I was to get paid for all the advice I gave you guys, our school system would be much better today, all right? Now, I have to let you know that I all appreciate you up there. It's really important for you to do your work, but, you know, we need a new vision for this school system in general. And the reason why I'm saying that, my involvement, 24,000 kids or whatever the case may be, now we're looking at perhaps maybe 16 or 15, you know, and we continue to not learn anything from any mistake that we've made, and we're getting worse and worse. Now we have this big deficit, well, what caused this deficit? Because we continue to lose more and more kids from the system. And why is it so? Does any of you sit down and wonder, why is it that we're losing so many kids from our system? I can think, and I know why. First of all, we need to seriously look at our quality of what it is that we're giving to our parents. Parents have reached a point where they're deciding, well, you know, I'm getting better somewhere else out there. The grass is always greener somewhere else. We have some good stuff happening in Hartford, but nobody knows much about what's going on. Here it is, we have a, a small little school, and superintendent, I'll ask you, when I came here over and over, make me a good school every year, and we could do better. We would not have to lose all the kids we're losing. Montessori, Bachelor, they are doing, they're an example of another good school. And here it is, teacher attendance, 100%, kids attendance, 100%. By the way, I want to thank you for the security guard that was put into the school recently, all right? I won't, I won't forget that. But when you have a working school, you support it, you build it, make it stronger, so someone can say, hey, we have a good school here, a diverse school, right? Very diverse. And here it is, we're thinking of, oh yeah, we're gonna have to cut. Yeah, we're gonna have to cut, right? So I'm asking you guys to seriously think, all right? Because I know none of you up there have your kid in a failing school, or a school that has a library that doesn't work because there's no staff for it, all right? So I want you to seriously look, we have a lot of, we have a lot of contract out there. Board members, you need to look at those contracts and see, does that interact with children's lives? Because until we can get our act together, we won't change anything, and we'll continue to lose and lose our parents from the city, and our economic situation gets worse and worse. Parents don't want to live here if they don't have good school. Think about it, seriously, all right? And I gotta say, I gotta say, our security guards, our teachers, we gotta respect our teachers, we gotta show them that that matters to us. We need to pay them right, so they want to stay in this district. Let's look at that. Every- Everyone else are paying their teachers right, and we have to worry our paraprofessionals? God, I was so sad when I looked at the salary they're making. We have to think about those things. If we value our staff, we pay them right. Doesn't matter who they are, pay them right. So as I said, I'm here, I'm watching, I have my grandchildren into the system, I want to make it work for them. I don't want to have to put them in a bus and send them into Avon, Simsbury, wherever it is. I want them to be right here in Hartford. Okay? So I'm asking you all to put your heads together and start thinking about what we can do better to make our system better, to keep our children here. The state is not going to give you more money if the system continues to fail, and I want to tell you that. So thank you. Think about it.
Raquel Calderon.
Good evening, Dr. Torres, and good evening with the Board members. I am here in support of wages to be competitive. We are underpaid. And when I say "we," I mean the paraprofessionals, teachers, and forget it, we underpay, the substitutes are not respected at all. Do you know how hard we work in the classroom with the children, with a lot of problems that Hartford children has? You know, you know how much you're paying, right now, for a dozen of acts? It is a shame for you to pay a hundred dollars in seven and a half hours. We work thirty-seven hours and a half. That's not, that's not part-time, that's not on-call, that's a full-time. We don't have any benefits. When you close for a day, we don't get paid, you don't care about us, we cannot collect unemployment, and we don't get paid. So we are under poverty money, that's disrespectful. And the teachers are quitting in Hartford because they're not happy, they're also not getting good pay. But I hear that the central office, they keep hiring consultants, they keep hiring this, getting paid, some of them get paid over $100,000, some of them over $200,000. They still getting raises, and we're not getting any raises. We don't have a good insurance, health insurance. You know, I told one of the candidates who's running for a mayor, can you believe that I worked sixteen years, fifteen years as a substitute, and I do not have rights for pension? And he almost, he was appalled about that. That's disrespectful. Do you know how much we work? We don't work in an office sitting down and having a cup of coffee and this and that and calling the other one and having another person taking care of your, you know, underpaid work. And we went to college, we have a degree. I work in a law office, I have different degrees, and I'm getting underpaid, but I'm talking for everyone. That's disrespectful. And now, because you don't have any staff, you're hiring people with high school who are walking with their cell phones over there. You are getting inferior education in Hartford. That's why the parents don't want their kids in Hartford schools anymore. That's why they go into the suburbs. And I see it. What is the Board of Directors doing? I'd like to hear. I would like you to call me and have a meeting with me. I need to know, what are you doing? Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Torres Rodriguez and School Board members. I am a teacher at Global Communications Academy International Baccalaureate, and I'm on the HFT Executive Board as Weaver High School Area Coordinator, and I'm also a proud resident of Hartford. The Hartford Board of Education at a January 4th Board Meeting moved forward a proposal, which is now in front of you, to partner with a North Carolina-based company to bring an esports lab to University High School only. While the principal of University High School mentioned benefits of an esports lab at his school, one of which he stated will help to recruit students and maintain the target score of enrollments to stay in compliance with the requirements of the CHEF settlement, no mention of research and published drawbacks, liabilities, or harms associated with esports and its screen time have been mentioned. Here are just a few of the scientific and health concerns on the effects of long-term screen time on the human brain. Hartford Medical Research found that digital devices and screen time can interfere with everything from sleep to creativity, and their clinic for interactive media and Internet disorders treat young people whose excessive gaming, including esports, social media, and other online activities are affecting their health and daily lives at home and at school. In a study verified by the scientists at Psychology Today, researchers have demonstrated that excessive screen time damages the brain, resulting in gray matter atrophy and reduced cortical thickness affecting emotional processing, executive attention, decision-making, and cognitive Anyone can agree that this sounds pretty bad. The Mayo Clinic says that there is a link between too much screen time and obesity, irregular sleep, behavioral problems, impaired academic performance, and violence, all which currently affect our students. Hartford schools already engage in student malpractice by ignoring the science on the harms of block scheduling on students with our demographics and ignoring the science on the cognitive benefits of early language education, which means starting, learning a language in kindergarten in all of our elementary schools. Will you also ignore the science on the long-term negative effects and harms of playing League of Legions for multiple hours a day? Today, you, School Board members, will cast an up or down vote on the esports lab build-out. Please ask yourselves, do you want to be responsible for ignoring the science on this matter and for allowing potential long-term harm to come to Hartford students' brain health? How will you show that you truly care and value Hartford's young people? Hmm. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent. My name is Michael Downs. I live at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. I'm also president of the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers. I'd like to, I'd like to also wish everybody a Happy New Year. Hope everyone had a pleasant and fruitful Martin Luther King Day. And I'd like to mention what has been mentioned earlier this evening concerning the food. I've eaten the food on many occasions because I like getting the five major food groups, so I buy the food. And at my age, sometimes you don't always get that if you eat just at home. So if you eat out at a place that gives you the five major food groups, no matter how much it is, it's good. But that's good for younger students. Older students need more food, need more of the five major food groups, and they also, it would be good for them to have a variety of the five major food groups. So I also concur with the students who spoke on the school lunches. But I, another thing I want to discuss is the Whisk School renovation. It was mentioned that they were going to design first and have design meetings. I haven't seen anything about design meetings. I heard something, a rumor, that there was one meeting. My neighbors and friends are concerned about this and that this, people seem to be dragging their feet, is the term I hear, concerning the renovation of Whisk School. I'd like to hear a little more about what is happening there. I thought that the, I was told that the neighbors, the neighborhood, as well as parents of the students, would be involved in the planning and the, and some of the ideas concerning the reconstruction. I know this will come up in the upcoming mayoral campaign in the spring and summer and next fall, and I guarantee you I'll make sure it does. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Ed and Superintendent of Schools. My name is Carol Gale. I'm a Hartford resident and the president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. Tonight, I speak to you regarding the school year 2324 budget. As a resident with family members attending Hartford Public Schools and as a labor leader, the emphasis of next year's budget must be on stabilizing our school staff. Current vacancies result in some Hartford students having received no math instruction from a certified math teacher this entire school year. That is a far cry from the goal of a quality educational experience for all Hartford students. Stability is a goal of the proposed budget, which assumes full staffing for the next school year. Where, though, are the savings indicated from this year's vacancies? Every certified staff member who has to cover for a vacancy is paid $40 per hour per our contract. That dollar amount represents the equivalent of a salary for about seventeen percent of our members, not including their benefits. Thus, the district is in essence saving money from those vacancies, since eighty-three percent of certified staff make much more than $40 per hour. We continue to see staff resigning each week. HFT, in fact, received five calls today from resigning teachers. How does this budget account for achieving full staffing? It continues to provide only fifty-eight percent of the total budget to our schools. Furthermore, the Equity-Based Starter Budget for each school does not include a guaranteed art or music teacher in each school, maintaining this opportunity gap for our students. The budget also assumes no projected increase from local taxes. The timeline for the budget, as the Superintendent shared earlier, began on October 10th and expects to conclude on February 21st. There will be a budget meeting with the unions on February 2nd, which we appreciate, as well as appreciate having received the budget information in advance. While we do appreciate the opportunity to review the budget, we do feel that such review might have had more impact if it came a little earlier when revisions were still being incorporated. HFT has offered on more than one occasion to advocate with the city on behalf of the Board of Ed. Advocacy from labor could potentially affect whether there is a budget increase. However, that has not been accepted to date. I, as a city resident, certainly want a quality educational system in my city, and I recognize that if the tax cost is not spent on education, it will be spent in other city departments such as public health or public safety, often at a greater cost to taxpayers. Some expenditures cannot be questioned, such as transportation, tuition costs, these things might be outside the Board's control. However, there are other items that do deserve full transparency and understanding as to their priority in stabilizing our schools. And therefore, I thank you for your attention to those items in the budget as this process continues. Thank you.
Patricia Muck.
Good evening to the Superintendent and the Board members. I'm back. Show me the money. Last time I spoke with you, I talked with you in regards to the Carrie Saxon Perry mural, and I was questioned that it may not exist. Well, today I have proof in a timeline. I have documented emails in these red folders. If you would like one, I will pass them out later. However, it does exist. On page, oops, I'm sorry, on page one of my document, you will notice that we applied for a Love My Block grant. We were given that Love My Block grant. On February 28, 2022, Mr. Heredia was emailed that we were going to apply for the grant. The Board accepted it and said that it was okay, and we applied for the grant. Next, on the 4th, April 19th, Mr. Cardula submitted a quote as the project manager, and Mr. Ellis Acheveria finalized the estimates for the project. On page five, April 25th, the grant writer informs Mrs. Primus that the grant has been submitted to the Hartford Foundation. Page seven, which is another email, that says, on May 9th, our committee was asked to increase the budget in the area of student incentives from $1,000 to $2,000. On page seven, June 22nd, the grant writer tells Mrs. Primus that the grant mural would be, we had actually won the grant. On page eight, June 20th, it starts the conversation with Erica Frank on how we received the money for the project. On June 22nd, there's another email that states and asks that Cynthia Sanchez from Hartford Foundation Public Giving was to check for the city's schools. The check will be issued in two weeks. We then, on page nine, June 22nd, Cynthia Sanchez from the Hartford Foundation Public Giving says the check has been mailed to the school district. It has been sent to the community partnership. Lauren received the message. Mrs. Soto Santos had up the money and would tell us what our project numbers would be. From that point on, I'm just going to say, because I have two seconds, page 12 is truly our smoking gun. Yamira asked Lauren to create the correct codes and munis. Lauren states that Mrs. Primus would be the lead worker. Mrs. Pipkin and Mr. Heredia are aware of what is going on. Yamira receives the check on June 29th. How do we start the process was the next question. And it goes on and on and on through the summer on how do we get the money? Everybody knows that the money is already in the budget. Everybody knows that the money was there, but guess what? Nobody knows where the money is at. We do have a code for Mr. Acheveria to have the money released. However, the money was not given to us. So once again, I ask you, where is the money? Show me the money. We are ready to start this project. We are ready to start this project as early as, no, April 2023. We're just waiting for the 20, wait, the $20,190 to be submitted so into the budget of Hartford. Now, Mr. Penn should have a code for us, because someone told me we had to go through the City of Hartford and not necessarily through the Board of Ed. But the money was already given to the Board of Ed as of June 29th via the emails of all of the people who said we have this. So if we have the money, we're ready to start the project. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
We now move to the report of the chair. As always, I will continue to remind every, at every board meeting, you will find the full committee reports as well as attachments and videos in the meeting's agenda on Board Docs. As a reminder, all committee and workshop meetings are livestreamed, as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting's agenda on Board Docs. I encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions, please contact Christina Santiago, our board liaison, at csantiagohartforschools.org. We now move on to the report of the superintendent.
Chair, I know that I took a little time earlier on to do the budget overview, and so I have one update. And Ms. Santiago, do you happen to have that visual, please? And it's just to double-click here on our year-to-date report on chronic absenteeism. So as of the 12th of January, our rate for the district for chronic absenteeism is at 37.9, down from 46% at this time last year. And right, while that is an improvement compared to where we were a year ago, it is slightly higher than our district goal of 34.9. So we are encouraged to see this positive momentum from last year and the fact that 22 schools are below our, our district goal. And so that is a positive there. Two schools, as you see here, that we're spotlighting, University High and Naylor, for achieving 17.9 and 17.5 chronic absenteeism respectively. When you think about the grade overall with the lowest chronic absenteeism, it is grade four, which is actually in, a similar trend that we've seen in the past. By grade three and four, right, it begins to, to decrease, which is what we want to see. And while we have the grade with the highest chronic absenteeism is ninth grade, we know that we also have a particular interest in kindergarten, which, right, our, our kindergartner chronic absenteeism rate is 47%. And it's the rate and the grade that has grown most dramatically since September. And so our team is, you know, digging down into the data. We know that there has been an increase in illness among our youngest students, and we are working to develop a comprehensive campaign to build understanding, awareness, and also address the root causes of our kindergarten students. Because we know that we have to build, support our families in building those positive attendance habits for our youngest learners. That concludes my, my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. We now move on to the business agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Board Member Brody.
Are we able to ask questions on, on anything the superintendent has presented tonight? She presented some on the budget. She just presented some on chronic absenteeism.
I believe we can make a motion to add it to, to the business agenda, if you wish.
Even if it was already discussed, like it was part of her report? So is it necessary to add an agenda item?
I'll look towards Lori. Any guidance around that? I just want to make sure we're in, we're in compliance.
While she's getting that information, for years on this board, we are able to engage with the superintendent on her report. We've done it for years.
Once again, I just want to make sure we're in compliance. So just give us a second. Thank you, Board Member Brody. With that being said, I do think I will open up to discussions or questions for the superintendent as it relates to the material that she covered, both in the budget as well as attendance, given that these are two critical matters. With that being said, I give you the floor to pose your questions or comments.
Thank you for that consideration. And I apologize, I don't know where on, when we were sent this information electronically, I went through it days ago, so I apologize if I don't know exactly on what page. There was a reference to the 2324 ESER funds in the amount of 90 million for that year. It was ESER and something else mentioned with it. And I'm trying to confirm that number, because in the committee of the whole, I asked that same question, and I was told it's 40 million. So I'm trying to get to the real number of how much ESER funds do we have for the 22, excuse me, 2324 school year? And Madam Superintendent, you weren't the one that answered the question and told me the 40 million was, Chief Penn that actually gave that data.
Clarifying question. So what is budgeted for spending out of ESER for 2324 is your question?
I said how many, how much ESER funds were available. I said it didn't matter if it was encumbered, just how much do we have? And the answer I was given was 40 million.
Chief Penn, do you have that information?
And in this document, I think it's 90, but yeah. It's this kind of smaller than what I was looking on at home.
Good evening. Let me see if I can clarify. The total amount left that we have for all of our ESER grants is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 95-ish million right now. And I think you'll see that if you go back to the monthly financial report that we issued through the month of November. As we laid out the budgets for ESER for both fiscal '22, '23, and '23, '24, the amount that we expected to expend in '23, '24 is 49 million.
Are we able to speak to the $90 million that's in the presentation that the board was sent to prepare for this meeting?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know what it is you're looking at that refers to the 90 million. My, my guess is it's a two-year number.
So in, in the essence of time, I want to be respectful. Ms. Brody, is it, is it okay that I ask, maybe take some time to identify where exactly that 90 million is coming from? And maybe emailing Chief Penn and others with a specific question?
Yeah, so, and I'm not going to hold up the meeting, I'm looking for it. But I do want to state that where the community has expressed concerns, I've expressed concerns on previous meetings, is that if we have this, these extra funds from the federal government that is more than the projected deficit, it's like, simple. Why aren't we using the ESER funds for, to cover the deficit? I'm very confused as to why, especially if it's not the 40 that I was told and it is the 90 that was included in a presentation that the board received.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments as it relates to the superintendent's report? Seeing none, we will now move on to the business agenda. Item 4.1, Contract Approval: Stay Plugged In. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Stay Plugged In for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2023 at a cost not to exceed $90,000. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Superintendent?
Thank you, and I'll ask our representatives that are here to just come up to the mic in, in case there are additional questions. So I know that University High is looking for support for the partnership, and this is for an esports room, along with additional opportunities to have access to quality learning experiences and exposure to college and career, specifically around earning scholarships for college that were not previously available, given that esports provides yet another, another avenue. So Stay Plugged would provide UHSSC with the technical support on not only how to create the room that will maximize those student experiences and opportunities, but also college assessment tools, technology support, material supplies, and specific consulting. I know that Principal Tominey has spoken at the committee meeting with regard to specifically focusing on targeting an increase of the number of resident students taking part in esports opportunities, such as being on the team, STEM courses, such as graphic design, video production, game design, and broadcasting. These are some of the additional opportunities. I know that there's a intentionality about making sure that students that don't necessarily participate in the current extracurricular activities that are offered or in the athletic, or the sports that are offered that have another opportunity to engage at a deeper level with the school. There are, with regard to the esports room, it will allow the team to prioritize two key components, a few key, a few components. One is the design and the delivery of the STEM and college readiness curriculum and providing the opportunity to college scholarships and fields that are, have not been offered before. And then I'll, I'll leave it for the team to speak to the benefits that this would provide some of our students, and then the, the innovation that we also want to, want to take advantage of as we think about how can we engage students differently as well.
Are there any questions, discussions, comments? Board Member Walker?
Yes. Hello. So I heard, are you able to hear me? Okay, I heard the presentation at, at the council of the whole. Since that time, I've been getting information about, essentially, issues around video gaming, both in the media and now through reports. I'm not questioning esports in that it can be a, a great thing. But essentially, this potential damage to students and their academic performance, are you, are you going to be addressing that? Are you going to be looking at that? How are you going to mitigate that?
Well, one of the first things, if you remember from my presentation, was that 80% of students who participate in esports have not participated in another extracurricular activity. So we're, we're addressing a whole group of kids and making them connect to school, right? And when you connect to school, you come to school, you're engaged in it, right? And as being a part of the esports team, you'll also have to meet the C I E C rules in terms of being eligible. So it's an added incentive for those students to do their schoolwork. And again, we, we talk about screen time, and I want to, you know, look around the room, look around the world, look around what we do as, as human beings today. We're constantly on screen time, right? And I think the structure that an esports team can provide will help our students to more regulate their time. As, as an administrator, I sit down with my students on a regular basis as they go off to college, and we work out schedules on how to be productive, right? So this is another avenue that University High School will help our students to be prepared for not only college and, and school and high school, but life.
Follow-up question?
Yep.
Okay, I appreciate what you're saying. It's not responsive. What research is talking about is the actual gaming and screen time creates a cognitive deficit or developmental deficit in young minds developing. Doesn't mind, doesn't mean they won't go forward to college and into life, but it's, it's like anything else. If there's a deficit somewhere, there's a deficit. And so I'm asking to acknowledge that if that is true, okay, that maybe we should look at that research, and maybe we should really think about it and how we should maybe mitigate that potential deficit. Because would you, have you seen those reports or studies? If not, I'm willing to, to share them with you post the meeting.
I would love to see them. I have not, I have not seen them. I would love to see them.
Okay. Then I.
Yeah, so I certainly can appreciate that as a parent. The amount of screen time that students spend, obviously, is a concern in general, right? From the time that they're small to the time that they get to high school. What we're talking about here is creating structure and limiting the amount of time that folks spend that they would otherwise spend if they weren't in school. Because 90% of students across the country are gaming. Whether they're athletes, whether they're not athletes, this is what they're doing. I've got three boys in my own house that are traditional sport kids. I was a traditional sport kid, but they all game when they're not performing in their traditional sport. That's oftentimes how they socialize. That's oftentimes how they, you know, cut loose, how they relax, how they engage with their, with their friends when they're not able to engage in person. I will certainly say that that doesn't mean that they don't have any interest in engaging in person. I also agree wholeheartedly with Sean. When these students are participating on a team, they're like every other traditional sport athlete. They have a reason now, many, in many cases, to want to go to school. And that's half the battle. Many of these students. Many of these students prior to being on a team or having a reason to be on a team, just don't, don't have that, that initiative. So now we've, we've, we've produced initiative, and with C I A C rules, and with, with schools putting, or teams putting their own rules around minimum GPA, it's forcing these kids to make sure that they're prioritizing their time, they're managing their time, just like traditional sport athletes, who also spend tons of time, whether it's on a court or on a field, to make sure that they can do both. Participate on a team, participate on their schools, or, or their school, and make sure that they're doing well in school. So, part of all of this is, it's not just video games. We're introducing curriculum, these students compete as a team, so they're learning valuable skills. Accountability to them, not only themselves, to make sure that they're prepared, that they're managing their time, they're doing all the things that they need to, to be part of the team, but they're accountable to their own teammates, similar to the skillset that we appreciate on the traditional sports side. Colleges recognize the skillset that these gamers have, and a lot of times, it goes unappreciated. And there are numerous schools, several hundred schools now, that have gaming teams, gaming clubs, they are offering scholarships. There are STEM kids that are all very interested in these, in these studies, and the opportunities are there. Many of the kids that we meet with had no interest in going to college. All of a sudden now have a desire to go to college, and through the scholarships that they're able to get, have a viable path to actually be able to afford school, and have a reason to go to school and have a community that they're a part of. So, it's not just high schools that are investing in esports spaces. Colleges are doing it because they recognize their student population, they want to be part of a community. As a parent that sends a kid to college, I wanna know that they're gonna have a community of friends to be able to engage with and hang out with, and this is certainly a way to do that.
Okay. Thank you. So, then one last question or comment, and this is, I appreciate what you're saying, and all the positive things you brought up are true. Now, that, the only comparison I'm gonna make is with high school and youth football. We've had to acknowledge now that there are brain injuries and injuries associated with it. It doesn't make people stop playing football, but folks have had to acknowledge the potential damages and begin to, to mitigate some of the possible damages that come from playing the sport. Now, what I'm asking you to be open to is, as we move forward, all right? Reports are out now, and I think they will, they will continue to grow, that talks about potential issues with playing this sport, no different than any other sport. I'd ask you to be open to what science and what research is showing, so that we can begin to, to mitigate potential issues and damages coming from playing the sport. You mentioned all the positive things, and that they will be there. The only concern that I have is not that esports is a wonderful thing, is that we're actually bringing it into the education setting. And that's in saying we're using it as a vehicle to promote educational performance and achievement. And so I don't want us to miss the fact that there's some possible damage that may come from playing this activity, okay? And so, that's what I'm saying, and who was, for the record here, I'm challenging us as a board to also, I will begin to share information with the board as I get it. Cause people get to me and put it in my face and said, oh, don't ignore this. So, I'm gonna take some ownership too, the board, if we find out more information, we maybe can also make recommendations as to how to make this a safer activity if we move forward with esports within the district.
Thank you. Dr. Schmerling?
I am familiar with the literature, and there's even more coming out, and the, the contribution to mental health illness in children with, with excessive use of screen time. I think the key word is excessive. Screen time in and of itself is not a negative, it can be a positive tool, but when it's excessive and unsupervised, it really becomes a significant issue. Having addressed, just said that, I, I do have some questions for you guys. There's some very positive aspirational goals that you've listed here. What are the metrics that we can look at to say, those weren't just aspirational, they were achieved? So as an example, we're gonna increase school spirit, I don't know how you measure that, but how do we know that that's been achieved? Scholarships that weren't previously available, are we gonna track how many kids? I don't know how you could say, they wouldn't have gotten scholarships otherwise, but what are the metrics that you use to demonstrate success?
What was the first one? So, connecting this to school is one of the survey questions on the student survey that the students complete twice a year. So we'll measure that, that, I mean, esports is not the only way that we're trying to connect our, increase our students' connectedness to school, but it'll be one of the measures that if we're, if we're reaching these kids, hopefully, that they'll, that'll be reflected in the survey.
So you do a before and after?
It's done twice a year.
Okay. My, my second question, this is a little bit more concerning for me, when I look at the caveats and conditions, there are a bunch on here. The very first is firm pricing is subject to site visit and infrastructure assessment. So when we approve, assuming we approve ninety thousand dollars, there are other caveats that say, well, this is not included, that's not included, we reserve the right to come back and do something different, the infrastructure is not there. I don't think this board is going to give an open check for those kinds of caveats. Can you address that?
Yeah, so certainly, we already done a site visit, so we've kind of, we've crossed many of those hurdles from when this initial proposal was submitted, so at this stage, we've already kind of verified from a technical perspective that, you know, we're, we're, we're good as far as technical parameters that we would need, need the space to, to be able to have.
No upgrades to intranet?
Nope, we're, we're good, yeah, we've worked with.
So can we strike all of these caveats if, if we approve this?
Yeah, absolutely, the, the only, the only caveats we had around changing the scope of the project was something that, through the planning process, if someone decided, you know what, they wanted to add ten more PCs, or they wanted to add something else, that we reserved the opportunity to then go back and revisit because the quote was for a specific amount of equipment.
See, this is a, a, a point of, of interest here. If that were to happen, would it come back to the board for reapproval?
That is correct, that would be above and beyond the contract that we approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Board Member Ledger?
Thank you so much. Good evening. I wanted to say that with regards to the gaming, it's, I'm actually excited to hear that it's coming. I remember when the pandemic happened, a lot of students were home, my kids included. And that's when students were able to kind of connect with one another with regards to gaming. My son in particular, he's thirteen, he was introduced to gaming, and he was able to communicate with his friends, and it was actually refreshing because that social emotional piece was able to be reignited, if you will, with students who were confined to being home because of the pandemic. Along with Board Member Schmerling, I'm curious to see the metrics, how you're going to track the scholarships and, you know, who's awarded, how many scholarships are awarded? And also, I'm hoping with regards to the excessiveness of the screen time, that you're able to kind of monitor that with students who are participating in this, this area. Because as a Montessorian, as a Montessori teacher, we, you know, we don't gravitate towards computers, we don't gravitate, gravitate towards electronics, everything is really hands-on. However, there is a group, a population that is more focused on, on the electronics and on the, the gaming, and there's so mu- there's a, it's a whole new world, pretty much. And so, I'm really excited about that. I wanted to say that there was a STEM fair that took place at the Connecticut Science Center last year, and I did attend that, and I saw a group of high school students who were in front of, I believe it was, two or three huge television screens, and they were gaming, they were actively gaming. And I believe they were with, it was Hartford Public High School. And it was early in the morning, and these high school students were excited, they were just working with one another, they were, and they were engaged. And to see that group of, you know, young men, early Saturday morning, they could have been in bed, they could have been doing whatever, but they were working together collaboratively. That was a good thing to see. So, I'm excited about this, and I'd like to, I'm, I'm hoping that it will be successful, and it will also attract more individuals to Hartford Public Schools because of the opportunity that this may bring.
Thank you. Are there additional questions or comments? Board Member Brody?
I did not attend the portion of the meeting that had the presentation, so as far as participants, how many participants are Hartford students?
We have approximately thirty-plus students that participate, I have not looked at their demographics when I walk by on their practices.
So that's important to me. Definitely, we have we have chef magnet schools for because Hartford students were not afforded access to quality education. So it is of the utmost importance, not just for this, there's been past presentations that have been bought before the board, and I've asked the, the same question, the access, right? So because there have been other past concerns, just along every opportunity that's afforded to our magnet school students to know the Hartford student involvement. So we don't have an answer there, I don't have anything else.
Well, so this room isn't gonna be just for esports, it's gonna be part of the curriculum, it's gonna be part of what we do on an everyday basis. So every student's gonna be exposed to this, and it's, it's gonna be very innovative, following along with the superintendent's new initiatives in terms of, we're gonna try something new, right? We, we are looking for new ways to engage students in their learning and in their school. So all students will have access to this, and I think i- in terms of an equity piece, it's gonna be at their school, so they're gonna be able to get there.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
So, we're saying ninety thousand dollars, I believe that's what's in front of us now. Can we make, I'm hope, I'm not gonna ask can we, I'm hoping that we would make the the assessment if this passes tonight. I'm hoping that we can make the assessment to see the questions that were raised here, in particular with brain development, right? We can, I think most of us has experienced that you'll have your phone in a two-year-old relative, one, they just get it and get, you know, they know how, like, they're born into it, right? And it does become very concerning when you're not, when you restrict and take back tablets and those sort of things. So it is a concern, and especially if it's some concern around brain development. So, I'm hoping as, as a board that we're committed to reassessing all of these concerns. The presenters have said they have not seen the data that was asked about from Mr. Walker, from Mr. Demage, our speaker, so I'm hoping that we are going to actually take the time to look into those things and how they affect our students' brains. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Before we move, I do wanna make one comment, I do wanna echo my colleague, Dr. Schmerling's observation as it relates to the caveats. I'll default to the superintendent and her team as it relates to the actual contract itself. But from what I heard today is that the first three caveats that are outlined here do not apply, or have been taken into account with the ninety thousand that's put before us. Completely understand that if the project goes out of scope, right? There, I believe there's twelve gaming PCs, if we increase, you know, if we act for two more, or if we need two more, that you'll circle back to this governing body to, to, to seek approval. So thank you for, for your time. With that being said, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with stay plugged in for the term outlined in the contract ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three at the cost not to exceed ninety thousand. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Abstentions?
One abstention.
The ayes have it, the motion moves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for talking.
Moving on, on to the next agenda, item four point two. I do wanna make a, a call out here. I've had some discussions with some, with staff as it relates to this particular item. It's been brought to my attention that the actual terms as is brought forth is not incorrect and probably requires more discussion. So I actually wanna make a motion to move business, business agenda item four point two to next board meeting on February twenty-first, and that this item is discussed at our teaching and learning committee. Superintendent, I'm not sure if you have, if you wanna speak to it, but for transparency, the one thirty-five that's in front of us is actually until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. If we go to twenty-four, that amount actually of one thirty-five doubles. I do not want to try to have that conversation here, I think it requires more discussions at committee, and more deliberation. So again, full transparency, I did not wanna brush this. So again, the motion is to move business agenda item four point two to February's twenty-first board meeting. Again, I'm making sure that it goes to teaching and learning. Superintendent, I'll let you make a comment.
Yeah, the only thing that I wanna reference is the funding source, which is the School Improvement Grant. Conversations have already been had with the folks at the state, and so it should be okay to bring it back at a future time.
Thank you. Board Member Walker?
No, so moved.
I'm just addressing your, so moved to your.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Board Member Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it, thank you. Moving to item, business agenda item four point three, second reading and adoption policy fifty-one forty-one point three. The motion that the Hartford Board of Education adopts policy fifty-one forty, fifty-one forty-one point four-three, student welfare. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
As our policy chair member, Board Member Johnson is not able to attend this evening, I will read the policy committee notes. Student well-being is the paramount importance of Hartford Public Schools. Engagement in classroom and other school activities is promoted and encouraged by district staff. The appropriate healthcare person will be summoned if any student is asleep, lethargic, or otherwise non-responsive during any class or school activity. Language added to the policy included, school health staff will follow standard procedures regarding family contact. There was board member questions about staff training on this policy as it relates to mandated reporting. Training will be addressed in administrative regulations. I now open up to discussions of questions. Seeing no questions or comments? Board Member Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, my, my comment from the committee discussion, I guess I would just reiterate that the proposed policy was general, and I questioned whether it was being covered by other activities, and so the, the only thing that I would look for in this policy is that at some point, if it's offering something that's distinctive and unique in this policy, that it maybe be spiked out and, and maybe this policy be beefed up to further spiked out and, and maybe this policy be beefed up to further kind of delineate why this policy is distinct from other policies where teachers are actually mandated reporters or somehow to have concern for student welfare.
Thank you. All right, seeing no additional questions or comments?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, board member Oliver.
Thank you. There's been great work done to align our policies or to update them based on best practices through our association, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, CAPE. And again, great work has been done. And I just want to, I guess, follow up what is my colleague's comment and just ask that question. Is this one of the policies that was following? I keep calling it best practices, but it, it may be Dr. Silver, some other reason. But just to my colleague's question, is that was triggering us to take a look at this policy?
Thank you for that question, Ms. Oliver. This policy was generated because we did not have language in place in our policy manual that specifically addressed students' lethargy, unresponsiveness, or sleeping in class. The wise thinking of the people who came before us never thought that they would need to add something like that to the policy manual, and it is to protect our students in the event that, that the reason for the lethargy or sleeping in class is something outside of a typical fatigue as a result of expending energy.
Just as follow-up, so for example, medical issue.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions or comments, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education adopts policy fifty-one forty-one point three, student welfare. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Moving to item five, consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are five point two, contract, contract continuation approval, the RISE Network, five point four, approval of minutes from December twentieth's board meeting. Any comments or questions regarding, sorry, any comments or questions on the consent agenda?
I have a question.
Board member Brody?
All a comment of a contract being on consent. I won't support us taking up a vote on a contract without discussing.
Thank you. Board member Walker?
Yes. That being said, I guess I'll ask, Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion to pull this out? So if, if you would, then I guess I will make the motion that we pull this, I guess this is the RISE contract, pull it out to business, regular business agenda so it can just be discussed and voted on as such.
Thank you for that. Do I have a motion to remove item five point two, contract, contract continuation approval, the RISE Network, from the consent agenda and take the rest as one item?
Aye, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move to item five point two. Sorry. Well, I believe we could still vote on the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. And then we'll come back to five point two. So now that the consent agenda is one item, do I have a motion to vote on the consent agenda, which is five point four?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Moving to item five point two, contract, contract continuation approval, the RISE Network. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to authorize the superintendent to? That's not the, give me a second. The motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with the RISE Network for the term outlined in the contract ending June thirtieth of twenty-three, of twenty twenty-three, at the cost not to exceed eighty-eight thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Superintendent?
Yes, we have successfully partnered with the Connecticut RISE Network for several years now. I do want to point out that the funding for this is BAR Foundation, the grant from the BAR Foundation. And the partnership with RISE predates the BAR Foundation partnership and funding. Hartford Public Schools, specifically Hartford Public High School, was an initial partner district with the RISE Network years ago. And this is, this work with RISE is part of our three-pronged approach to support the development of our freshman success, career pathways, and personalized pathways, which, right, it's all connected to our portrait of a graduate and also aligned to our instructional, instructional vision. And for, for context and background, back in the summer of twenty twenty, with support from the BAR Foundation, we did seek out additional support and expertise from RISE to support with our high school transformation efforts, specifically focusing on grade nine on-track achievement. And so we wanted to leverage the opportunity to apply for the phase three BAR funding, given that we've, right, year, three times we've been funded by, by BAR. And specifically included RISE as a partner in that proposal and budget through June of twenty twenty-three. And so the scope of work is for the full calendar year, but two contracts will be submitted, right, one in January and one in June, and then again in July to December. And so one from January to June and then from July to December. And so throughout the year, I'll just reference a few of the streams of support, if you will, fostering an ongoing professional learning community among our high school grade nine assistant principals and the freshman academy teacher leaders. Also facilitate, designing and facilitating to cross-school grade nine convenings for administrators, our teacher leaders, and grade nine team members so that they can continue to reflect and improve upon their freshman academy design. Of course, we want to maintain the RISE data dashboards and continue to provide administrators and grade nine educators with access and the, the processes and the protocols and the knowledge to navigate and leverage the data in, available through the dashboards. And so I am participa, particularly pleased as part of this work that there will also be monthly coaching to the student support and success center coordinator and staff in support of our grade nine repeater group of students. We want to certainly double down on ensuring that we're leveraging not only the structures, processes, procedures, the data tools to support some of our students that have not been successful in terms of staying on track. So we want to support staff as well.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Board member Schmerling?
Are these schools, do they, do they represent all ninth graders or is it a subset of the ninth grade?
These are specific schools. So we have our Buckley, Hartford Public High School, Kinsella, and Weaver. So it's four schools, ninth grade across all schools.
So how, how many high schools with ninth grade do we have?
Oh, all of our, sorry, all of our high schools have ninth grades, but these are, there are four.
So it's a subset of the high school. Where I was going with this is it would be interesting to look at, we saw the absenteeism rate is the highest in ninth grade. How do these four schools compare to those other schools?
Um, team, do you have the, the data for those four schools? I will say, Dr. Schmerling, that our comprehensive high schools have the highest chronic absenteeism rate. And it is very important for us to build the capacity of those teachers, administrators, and for them to have collaborative opportunities to learn from one another around those root causes, how to leverage the data. And so that's, that's what a lot of this is focused on. And so, yes, we will be targeting those schools that have the highest chronic absenteeism rates.
To my old theme of, of metrics, it would be great to have that come back so we can see, hopefully we're making an impact and this will prove its efficacy.
So twofold there. Chronic absenteeism, which, right, we really want to focus here is the on-track and students are in school, they're engaged, right, we want to, then the translation would be that they're, they're on track.
Are there, board member Walker?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a comment to kind of further the superintendent's point. Other schools are doing other things. This RISE is working at four high schools. It doesn't imply that no efforts are being made at other schools to try to address this issue. So I don't want Dr. Schmerling to think that we're just benchmarking nothing versus we're doing something at these four schools.
Board member Brody?
So because this is a contract continuation, do we have any data for the previous contract? As far as performing, performance or the work that has been done that leads us to this contract?
We can provide you with the information as to all of the work that has been done with our, our teachers, our teacher leaders. And team, I'm sure we can also drill down to student-specific data.
Great. Are we not prepared for that because it was under the consent agenda?
It was not a, a request that was made?
Who would, who would request that?
Board members are able to request that before, before a regular meeting.
And I'm saying that because any, in, at least me, right? I'm always, always, almost a hundred percent of the time asking if we are, if it's someone that's coming before us for the first time, usually they're presenting to us, they've done it in this state, this city, similar to Hartford. That's why it's good for Hartford. So there's no data in, in that case. But if it was a contract continuation, we always want to know, why should we continue our contract if we don't know the great work that you've done?
Our team can speak to on-track data, not necessarily yet the chronic absenteeism data. And so that data we have, and Sam, after, Mr. Purdy, after Dr. Nagronin's team speaks, perhaps you can also speak to the improvements in the past five, five years across the state in the cohort.
So, good evening. I did want to share that when we presented this particular contract at Teaching and Learning, we know we always want to bring forth the data because it's, it's, right, we should as a continuation. And we did during that meeting present on data related to when we were comparing quarter one on-track data across the years. So there was a chart that we used during that discussion at Teaching and Learning. And superintendent, that's the slide that I can forward for those that were not in attendance to be able to see.
I, I do want to make one comment. I think board member Brody brings up a good point and is probably just a best practice going forward. If there are data points or metrics that are shared in any committee, let's make the assumption that board members, not all board members are able to attend and/or maybe just don't have the, the, the time to review the materials and, right, as relates to the meeting. So just moving forward, I would say, let's make sure if there's any data or metrics that are shared in committee meetings, particularly if there's around a contract, regardless if it's on the consent agenda or not, that, that those metrics are, are included in the packet. And, and certainly it's up to the board members to review the packet before a regular board meeting.
And through you, Mr. Chair, the reason why I asked, if, if it was on consent, they wouldn't expect to present tonight. So that's why I said, is it because it wasn't on consent? But I appreciate that. So I trust that Dr. Nagron is saying that students have benefited and have, we have made progress in keeping our students on track as it relates to this partnership.
Let me have a, can I have?
Yes. What I, what I want to clarify is that the data that were, that was referenced earlier was chronic absenteeism data. And so that is not data. That was included, Ms. Brody, in that, in that presentation. So I just want to clarify that.
Board member Walker?
Yes. Dr. Nagron, you brought up the student being on-track data. Can you kind of spell out what that means? Because I go home and, and so, well, I get peppered on in essence. I get challenged that on-track means a kid's not failing out. And so I, I kind of want to understand that on-track means something more than that. And so can you help me understand, what does on-track really mean?
So that is a great question because that's one that I continue to reiterate even to our teams when we're speaking. Our current definition of on-track, it pertains to the number of credits in a given year that you are expecting a student to master at the end of that academic year. So for example, a student on grade nine, for them to be considered on-track would mean that they pass at least six classes during their freshman year and no course failures in math or English. That's what it means to be on-track. So throughout the, the semesters, what we do and part of the data that we left when these conversations are happening, as part of these convenings that RISE does with these schools, part of the data that they review is, hey, every marking period, we're pulling the grades to see, are our freshmen passing these courses? And always keeping a close eye, are they passing math and English? Because at the end of the academic year, they need to have at least six credits and those six, right, we do not want to see a fail in a math class or an English class. And that is what it means to be on-track as a freshman.
Okay, okay. So if I can entertain this conversation, so by your definition, a D is still considered passing on-track?
That is considered passing.
Okay. Now, I see. All right, somehow we need some additional, we need some additional factor there. Like, to me, what I would love to see, if I could draw the wand, I would like to see them on-track and maybe with a composite GPA of maybe two-point-oh. So maybe you can have a D, but maybe there's some other grades that balance it out so the young person is maybe at least a C student. Okay? Because if I had a student who was a one-point-oh student leaving the ninth grade, for me, that student would be at risk even though they're technically moving along. And I'd want to address that. That'd be my only feedback to maybe additional information provided from the on-track data. Can we, can we, can we provide composite GPA information in addition to that on-track?
So, board member Walker, we also utilize guidance that comes directly from the graduation requirement from the state. The state also utilizes. The state also utilizes the term as it relates to course attainment, and often it is embedded in terms of passing. So that is what, right, in the current policy right now, we, does not speak, to your point, about a particular GPA to be part of the definition of on-track, that does not currently exist in what we have as part of our definition.
I'm, I'm satisfied with that. As I hear it, I understand that that, for me, represents a floor, and I'm okay with that. State regulators can give me a floor. What I'm asking for is additional data so that I have more insight as to risk in, in, in our own school system, right? So give me on-track, but then also provide GPA so we can get a flavor of, right, how much risk is in that population of kids that are on-track. So I, I guess I would request that moving forward, just as information to us, not to redefine what on-track means.
Noted.
Thank you.
Chief Nagron, I do have one question, just clarifying question. The definition of on-track, that is defined by the state, correct?
So the state has one definition, and then we try to mirror that definition. Sometimes you also put it, put in nuances to that definition, but right now, the one that articulated is the existing one that Hartford Public School has.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the other comment that I will want to make sure that my colleagues are aware, so as it relates to metrics for this particular contract, if you look in board docs and within your packets, within, I believe on slide twelve, there is academic performance metrics, and I'll just, again, for public consumption, I'll just read kind of the, the key takeaways. Buckley and Weaver has seen a growth in their Q one on-track rates year over year since the start of the partnership. Hartford High, Hartford Public High School, to a small extent, Kinsella, saw a decrease in their Q one on-track rate between two thousand and twenty one, twenty two, and two thousand and twenty three. Again, for public consumption, it's, you can, I know it's probably hard to see on TV land, but it is, it was included in our board packet. And I believe, superintendent, you have some additional data that you'd like to share?
But Dr. Schmerling's question earlier on chronic absenteeism, and so I just want to offer that Hartford Public High School's chronic absenteeism rate last year at this time was seventy percent, they're at sixty percent now. Weaver seventy eight last year, currently sixty five. Buckley sixty five, currently sixty one. So just additional data.
The motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with RISE Network for the term outlined in the contract ending June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty three at the cost not to exceed eighty eight thousand five hundred seventy nine dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Moving to item six, executive session, potential lease of central office space. We will be going into executive session to discuss a potential lease for central office space. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion move. We will be taking into executive session, superintendent Torres Rodriguez and attorney Lori Mizurik. Thank you.